This heat up your down with like.
On the draft Smithville Board of Alderman Work Session is now called to order. First item on the agenda is a discussion of EDC development incentives. Will this be Ms. Mitchell? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anna Mitchell, Assistant City Administrator. Thank you all for being here this evening. We'll talk about EDC incentives. Over the last several months, I believe, starting in September of 2021, the Economic Development Committee has been going through the economic development policy that the city has already in place. The updates that you see in this are just added updates. We did not delete anything from the current policy or anything like that. These are just additional recommendations that the Economic Development Committee has placed on these incentives. So like I previously stated, we started this process in September 2021. We just went through one to two different incentives per meeting. We have eight incentives that are available to us through the state of Missouri. And what happened is Megan Miller from Gilmore and Bell. She's also with us here this evening. She went through the education of every single one of these incentives and then was able to give space and time to our Economic Development Committee to ask questions, have discussions, and then also to place additional recommendations on how the city can move forward, on how we are to administer or allow these different incentives within the City of Smithville. So as far as the eight incentives, going through all of those, the Economic Development Committee actually only placed additional recommendations on three of those. So looking at the remaining incentives, they thought that those incentives were good to go and they didn't need any additional recommendations on top of them. The first is the neighborhood improvement districts, MIDS, are usually and primarily used by pre-existing property owners. Usually a small batch of them come together. They have a gravel road. They want to have some kind of funding to pave said road or they have a water issue or a flooding issue and they want to band together and create a district that then addresses that problem. And then an assessment will be put placed on their property taxes that that is issued on an annual basis. And then over time, those are then paid back. Initial funds are received through a bond process that are issued through the city. The recommendation, additional recommendation that the Economic Development Committee placed on those is to only allow NIDS on pre-existing developments with individual lots separately owned, excluding new developments without individual ownership. The thought process behind this is that there have been developments in this Northland area that have allowed NIDS on developments before they're developed at all. So one property owner, one lot before it's broken up into separate pieces. And those bonds are then placed on the responsibility of the city. And there has been, there have been instances where the development just completely tanks and those bonds are then still the responsibility of the city. And then the city has to then pay those annual fees associated. So that's something that we would like to avoid with the City of Smithville. So that is where that recommendation comes from. For community improvement districts, the Economic Development Committee is recommending that we limit the years of the CID to be in place to 20 years. Currently a CID. Oh, actually it is already at 20 years. Apologize. And they also express a preference for the CID board to be developer controlled with city representation. The current said that we have with the Smithville Commons, which is a 1% sales tax that goes to the CID is developer controlled with city representation. The relationship there has worked very well so far. We've been able to be in the meetings, have our opinions known. Myself, Stephen and Megan have all been present in many of those meetings, making sure that the CID board at that time is doing things properly, moving forward, having proper audits on an annual basis. We want that recommendation to move forward as well with any future Cids, having it be a city-heavy or city city-controlled CID board. That would put additional hours on staff when this could easily be done by the developer. The third recommendation is through the Tax Increment Financing, TIF. We currently do have one TIF with Smithville Commons. And this impacts property and sales tax of all of the jurisdictions within the area. So ourselves, the ourselves, the library, the zoo district, the school district and the county. Yes. Um, so the use of funds go to land acquisition, structure demolition, public infrastructure, and they're currently at a maximum of 23 years. There's a whole slew of other specific information associated with TIF, but additional recommendations that the Economic Development Committee would like to put place on a TIF is that the maximum of total project costs to be reimbursable to the developer be capped at 20%. Outside public improvements in that relationship of negotiations at the very beginning, we want to place a highly recommended on public improvements such as additional parking or a partnership to provide parking. The city to require approval of business types, not necessarily specific businesses, but types such as sales tax generating businesses versus a bank or offices or anything like that. Just to make sure that the city has some kind of say in those situations. And then the recommendation of a 15-year cap on the 23 maximum years that is currently allowed through statute, the statutory limit. And then a minimum total project cost at $1 million. If there's any, if there's a project that's less than a million, it's really not worth our time at that point. Most of the projects that come through TIF are far higher than anyway that anyway. So I don't think we're going to have any issues on that one. Um, these are all the recommendations that the Economic Development Committee has brought forward. Any proposal that is outside of these recommendations that comes to the city, we're not going to just turn them away. We're still going to bring them forward. We're going to discuss them still. We're going to be able to work through them, have those negotiations. What this policy does is it gives developers an idea of what we're looking for. What's the most palatable for our board and for our community? And gives them an idea ahead of time to them giving us their proposal. After that, are there any questions on these incentives? I do have Megan Miller here who can touch any specific details of incentives. I also have Alicia Net here, who is our Economic Development Committee Chair, and she can talk to some of the specific decisions that were made as well.
I have a question. Anna, just quickly clarify, you said 15-year on top of the 23?
A 15-year cap. So there's currently a 23-year max of TIF. The recommendation is to bring that down to 15 years. Apologize for that condition.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Megan and the EDC and Anna for spending months and months and months on this. I know you guys did an overview and we had started talking about this a year ago. So a year later, we now have a policy document, which is good to have. So appreciate the time you guys took on this. And if anybody wants to watch those videos, they are all online and they can see how it all came about.
They're riveting. Thank you.
I know Megan watches them weekly. When other cities ask her, she has to go watch Smithville's videos. All right. Next item is number three, changes to terms of office. Who's got this one?
Linda just had wide eyes. So I'll, at a meeting earlier this year, Alderman Hartman requested that we research steps to look at term of office. Linda has provided a memo that's in your packet that outlines state statute requirements. The position of mayor could be for a term of two, three or four years. Alderman positions could be for a term of two or four years. If the board had a desire to change the terms, we would adopt an ordinance that would put the, that would create ballot language. And Linda has a sample ordinance in the packet that we would take to the voters. A majority in support of such ordinance would approve that change. And then once the ordinance comes back to the governing body and is adopted as the election results are adopted, then that becomes effective. So Linda's also outlined times for upcoming elections and the certification of ballot questions. So for a November 8th general election this year, the ballot questions would have to be certified by August 30th. And to place an issue on the April 4th ballot would have to be certified by January 24th.
Thank you. Alderman Hartman, you have any?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, since we had the opportunity to talk about this in work session, one of the thoughts around this is other cities and municipalities often have longer terms. And I think it does, it does a few things and it's like the board to consider. Number one is it establishes kind of a longevity of serving versus a two-year term. Generally, your first year, you're trying to find your way. I'm speaking from experience. My first year, I'm trying to figure out exactly the processes, the system. And in the second year, which I am coming up, just personally, I will be running for reelection. And that's, that's fine. That's, that's the way the process should go. I'm just simply asking the board to consider the fact that a four-year term might be more favorable to us for, for reasons of potentially saving some money. I would like to kind of understand what the economic impact is to our city. Cause I believe there is a cost to an election correct each year. So I would hopeful that maybe that would save a little bit of money. And just, so I'd like to hear the thoughts of the rest of the board. But if we do approve this ordinance and for those listening in online and in the public, I mean, this is a voter. If we approve it, it's not, it's not approved. It's a voter, it's a voter-based decision. And I would like to, you know, have that in consideration.
I do appreciate the, the need of consistency because two years is not a whole lot. Excuse me. I did look online and tried to find out who in our areas are not doing the two-year. And correct me if I'm wrong, right now I've only saw Gladstone, Lee Summit and I think Kansas City. And Lee Summit went with a three-year.
Yeah, Kansas City's three, I think, or four.
It's true. I know they, they went from the two. I knew that, but that was the only ones that I've seen so far. I could see the advantage of that, maybe even cost effectiveness. But I've already received a couple emails wanting to know. I mean, other than that, what's, what's the advantage? I mean, that's a strong advantage.
Well, and one other thing is if you think about the Alderman elections, Chevalier's been in three elections now and unopposed. Or have you been unopposed? I mean, it's not everybody's jumping to run every two years or every year because half the board's up every year.
I have a comment or some questions here. The, it does seem like, and like Alderman Hartman and I've talked before and, and Alderman Chevalier also, it does seem like that you're, I'm brand new to this. So it seems like, like Dan has told me, it gets, you know, once you get on your feet, you're running again. I definitely see the, the benefit to that. And also just wonder if we, but it seems like there's also always an election. It seems like this election constantly signs are changing and coming up. So it is the fact that maybe the voters might get, oh my gosh, we're voting again. Right. It might get watered down to a cent. So I see that piece of it. But concerning the four-year, the four-year terms, have we considered the term limit? I would support a four-year, if we change it four years time and then with a two-year term limit, I would support that. I think that that allows for significant time for the person to at least have four years. So it's not an issue in the eight years. If it, if it is a time to fill out their term and then after that time to let someone help have the helm.
Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, I was actually going to say the same thing. I mean, I feel like, you know, if we were going to go to that or at least ask the voters for that, we should put in something where we do have a term limits because we don't want the same people. Just, you know, it gets stale after a while and you want to have fresh ideas. So, so yeah, I would definitely like to see a term limit, two terms, like you said.
Anyone else? So what's the direction we want to give staff on this?
I'd say go ahead and move forward with the, looking at a four-year term. And then in, put in there also a two-year or two-time, you know, be a two consecutive term limit. I still understand that if they bow out a, a term, they can still be voted back in if need be.
And I appreciate that, Alderman Atkins and Alderman Russell. Yes, I'm, I'm for that. I mean, I, I think there is a certain time that, you know, you serve. And so if we could, we could have the, the city staff look at moving that term for us to four years. And then potentially, I don't know if there's a change, an additional change in ordinances to, to do a term limit.
And now I'm actually looking at the statute right now and I'm also looking at John. I, I don't know if there is. Yeah. In the language that I'm reading specifically related to the length of terms, I'm not finding anything. Yeah, it's not there. So, okay. So we'll have to confirm that and we can confirm that with, with John and get information to the board and have information for August 2nd, which still, I guess, the other question that we would have is if that, if that is something that you all want to take, would you like to have that for a November ballot or an April ballot next year? Part of that will be determined, I would think, by the answer that we can get, that we can.
Yes, Cynthia, I, again, I, I think we get more turnout on the November ballot. Give more opportunity for our citizens to understand the, the reading. I'm okay either way because my understanding is for us that have it coming up, we still would, we would initially serve two years correct is that my understanding.
Not if it's on a November.
If it's on a November ballot, it would, what would happen is the new ordinance would go into effect after you all adopt that ordinance. So if it is a November ballot, then this would be effective and it would, in April, the election. You're still, you would still have to, everyone serves the term they, they've been elected to, beginning with the April election, it would be four-year terms.
Alderman Chevalier.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I would, would be willing to rush it that fast. I think this is a municipal issue. I think it should be a municipal, on a municipal ballot. And that way it would, you know, people need to show up if this is what they want to do. So.
That's fair. I mean, I, to me, I just appreciate the board and us having the opportunity in work session here to discuss it. So I'm okay with that if that's.
I think, I think that, that like, like Alderman Hartman said, I think more people show up at the November ballot. I think that would get more of a, a representation for it. I think with the description of term limits in there also, I think it might get more, more people turning out for it. But either way, I'm, I'm fine with it. But I mean, I, I say we, we put it together and see what happens on, on the, on the next meeting, if we're going to be ready or not.
I do have one comment about term limits. I just don't know if I agree with the term limit because a lot of us have ran unopposed. So say my eight years is up, nobody wants to run.
And I think that's why most municipalities don't have term limits.
Right. I don't think we should have a term. That's my personal opinion. I'm all for a four-year. Cause like you said, I'm almost done. Like I said, I've just got my feet going and now it's time for you soon to be up. So.
If you're talking about term limits, my thought process is if you give that to the voters, they'd be voting on term and term limits as separate issues. What I'm hearing is a little bit tying those two together and it may be done, but that's a little more difficult. I'm going to have to look at that. Because the statute clearly says we can change or the, with your approval goes to the voters thinking you can change the Alderman from two to four, mayor from two to three to four, something of that nature. And that's the authority I've given in that statute. There's nothing in that statute that says end term limits. So my thought process is when we put together the ballot language under the existing statute for term limits, it's going to say one thing. And if we have a separate issue for, for the term of the limits and the term amount, that may be a separate ballot issue. So I just want to give you a heads up on what may be coming back to you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that clarification. So the other, other thing is I think with that, my understanding Cynthia is we also need to look at the mayor's two, three or four-year term because that would be a separate ballot issue. Is that correct? I, I, again, I follow the same train of thought. The board may, may or may, may or may not agree with me, but my train of thought is that again, it's the longevity of the office. If we do happen to have a new mayor in the future, they're spending that first year trying to understand the position and the role. So it would be my thought that we would also look at that. But again, the rest of the board has to let us know if that's what we want to do as well for that.
I'd rather look at the mayor and Alderman's terms as opposed to term limit at this time. Because quite frankly, if they don't like you, they're not going to vote for you anyway. If you're not doing your job.
The consensus of past Alderman, I mean, last time we talked about this, we had people that were well acquainted with people that ran for two-year terms and, and understood that that's your term limit. You get voted out, you're done. So on the mayor's term, I'm, I'm fine either way. Two years, four years, it doesn't really matter to me, but you know, it does save turnover and those things, but whatever we all want to do. Go for it.
I'm for four-year terms for Alderman and mayor and no term limit.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm for four-year term and term limit for all of them. I think eight years is plenty for anybody. And if, if like, like Alderman Kowalski said, that she, someone's not running, I would imagine that if they, if someone knows that in the city that they're not running, that their terms up, that we'll have somebody step forward. I think also we could address that if we need to, but I would, I would be surprised if someone didn't step forward. But I think we can put some, some verbiage in the, in what we're going to send to the voters as well.
I feel the same way, four-year terms and term limits, a year term, a year max.
For both?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Alderman Hartman.
I'm, I'm good with that, Mayor. So.
Alderman Yulidol.
I'm good with that also.
Sounds like two to four.
Mayor, if I may, one question that I would have in a staff is we need to clarify the term limit in that process. So do we want to proceed with pursuing November ballot? If that is the case, we need to probably get information to you back for the August 2nd meeting so we can have that discussion and information and then be able to get language on for certification in time for approval. Or do you want to look at an April election and that gives us some more time? I just need to know which we're looking at to, to bring because we need to know how long we have for John to research the information, get back to you, determine how we would craft that information and then a timeline there.
Alderman Atkins. August or April or November or April?
I like the idea of November, but gives more people a chance to, to weigh in.
Hartman.
Of mayor of November as well.
Chevalier.
November.
Yulidol.
November. There's a majority.
Okay. So we'll work to get some information around for the August 2nd meeting. Given the fact that the language would have to be certified by the 30th and it has to be an ordinance, we'll probably have to, if we bring information to you for clarification on the second, if we're able to have that language in an ordinance, would you all be okay with having work session discussion to ensure we want it on the agenda and then placing it on the agenda so we could have first reading and then second reading on the 16th? Even if it is, it might be multiple questions and it could be, John, as many as four questions on the ballot, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We'll get that around for work session and agenda for August 2nd.
So in that language, we'd have to, John, correct me if I'm wrong. If we're going to term limit, we want to say two consecutive four-year terms, not two consecutive terms, because then everybody that's currently serving would be out. Yeah. So I get it, but we want to put in there two consecutive four-year terms. So even if the four-year terms fails, the term limit doesn't go into effect.
Well, can we do something where it says like eight years total?
It usually is ballot language towards terms, not years of service. Because what happens if we have somebody that has to resign and then we ask somebody to serve that's been served, you know, three years, we can't. So if Don Hanks was here, he could confirm this, but he had to conserve multiple times throughout multiple decades because they had openings.
So are you saying, John, are you saying two four-year terms, not necessarily consecutive? Are you saying two four-year terms?
Well, I'm saying eight years.
I'm saying eight years consecutive, but I, I mean, I'm wondering if you can add the language that, you know, that would factor in potential two or four-year term. And just say if it's a two-year term, then it's four consecutive terms. If it's a four-year term, then it's two consecutive terms and have that in the same language, just to cover all bases.
John, I think you have your work cut out for you. Yeah, if we can do it, thank you. Anything else on this one? Moving on, Senior Center contract. So Mr. Denton.
All right, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to speak on the Senior Center facility. So in 2020, the board provided a short-term guidance on the direction of the Senior Center to staff. That direction was to have the Parks and Recreation Department manage the rentals of the facility, add more rental availability when the seniors were not using the facility and increase the fee to be more aligned with other rental facility area in the area. Since then, staff has worked to utilize the Senior Center for more rentals. In 2020, the Senior Center brought in just over $1,000 in rental revenue. In 2021, the Senior Center brought in about $4,000 in facility rental revenue. It should be noted that the Senior Center was closed for four months in 2021 due to COVID-19. Currently, staff predicts another significant increase in rental revenue in 2022. Through eight months, we just got over 3,400 and we are predicting about 4,500 in rental revenue by the end of the budget year. So staff is bringing this discussion back to the board as the Senior Center lease is up for renewal in 2023. Staff is seeking the board direction on a long-term goal of the Senior Center facility and lease. So you should have the agreement.
Need more water? Do you turn there up?
All right, we're back. So you should have the agreement in front of you or in the packet. The, the city lease agreement with the Smithville Senior Citizen Center was signed in August 6th of 2013 and that was to run through August 5th of 2023. In 2013, the agreement allocated about 250,000 from the Clay County Senior Services to make the Senior Center what it is now. So they did the renovations to the outside and the inside to create the Senior Center itself. In that agreement, there is a tenant use. So the agreement allows for the use of the building by the Smithville Senior Citizens from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, each and every week for a rental fee of $1 a year. Currently, the group, the group uses the building Monday, Wednesday and Friday for meals and activities. The building is also used on Tuesdays and Thursdays for office hours. In the Senior Center, there is an office, a room for a pool table, a storage room for senior use only. Just this last summer, staff was able to access these three rooms after a meeting with the seniors to obtain the keys. Just this last summer, staff was able to access these three rooms after a meeting with the seniors to obtain the keys. The pool room has two cabinets that store decorations and a pool table. The storage room holds leftover tables, shelves and holiday decorations, games and candy. The office has a desk with a computer, Wi-Fi printer and filing cabinet. The agreement requires the city to maintain an insurance and flood policy on the building. Fiscal twenty-three budget includes thirty-four hundred for insurance premiums. We provide utility services for the building, including gas, electricity. Fiscal twenty-three budget includes thirty-three hundred for these utilities. Repairs and maintenance to the building, fiscal twenty-three budget includes four hundred and eighty dollars for pest control and five hundred dollars for miscellaneous repairs and expenses. And we also provide weekly janitorial services. Fiscal twenty-three budget includes twenty-two hundred for janitorial service to be performed three times per week. Monday, Wednesday and Friday evenings after meals have been served in the building. The agreement also states that the Smithville Senior Center is responsible for telephone and internet. However, the city has been taking those costs on. Through the budget. So that budget includes about nineteen hundreds for those services. Just as, since we brought this back up in twenty twenty, we have eliminated the use of cable TV in there. So the total fiscal twenty-three expenditure budget for the senior center operates about eleven thousand eight hundred. But the city used, the agreement allows the city to use the building outside of the nine to four Monday through Friday for third party rentals. The current third party rental rate is a hundred dollars plus two hundred dollar deposit for weekly rentals and two hundred and fifty plus two hundred dollar deposit for weekend rentals. Rentals are now done online through the Parks and Recreation Rental Software. In fiscal year twenty, the city returned to weekday evening rentals of making. Weekday evening rentals available and weekend rentals are offered once per day. One renter can rent the building Saturday and another on Sunday. In fiscal year twenty-three, we are predicting five rentals on the weekend and ten rentals during the week, ten months worth of recurring rentals. Therefore, the city recruits just about four thousand of the eleven thousand eight hundred. Operating expenses from rental revenue. The remaining seventy-eight hundred operation losses funded through the general fund revenues as well. So, short-term discussion. As it pertains to the upcoming fiscal year twenty-three budget, staff seeks board clarification regarding the goal of the senior center. Is the board satisfied with the changes that have been made? To this end, staff is asking the board feedback for the following relations to the fiscal twenty-three budget. Should the time allocated to the seniors just be Monday, Wednesday, Friday from nine to two? And eliminate the office hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays? Do the seniors need specific rooms for billiards, office space and storage? Should their personal items like pianos, bookshelf, et cetera be removed? Are there any changes to expenses the board wishes? To change by canceling additional services? Does the board desire to create additional youth, teen, adult or senior programming to take place in the facility? To note, staff has allocated funds to paint and purchase equipment to better the rental space. We also are managing the grants by submitting their, their expenses each quarter to Clay County Senior Services. We also started in twenty twenty-one, senior fitness classes. That has been a huge hit. And seniors have requested definitely more hours for that as well. So. We'll start with short term and then go from there.
Alderman Atkins.
I do like the idea of maybe some additional youth or teen, teen opportunities that program has taken place in there. But not at the expense of anything the seniors are currently getting.
What do you mean?
I don't want to. Take away what they're currently getting, shorten their hours, shorten their, their rooms or activities.
Yeah. And it is pretty common for the seniors to be out there by, by one, one-thirty on their Monday, Wednesday, Fridays as well. So. But since that is in the contract, we haven't been able to have any rentals prior to that. We have to start them at four due to contract services.
Yeah, I, I realize, I know too that. A lot of the times when we do have events in there, that's one of the things they're really worried about is their personal items. So I don't know. If they're using them, great, but if it's more of a problem. I know that's what is used for the Pancake Breakfast during Lake Fest and they had a lot of complaints about sticky floors and what else there was the next day. So. You know, we need to be able to use the space and not. Have them upset every time it's used. So that means removing some of the personal items. I know Clay County Senior Services too mentioned to me that the part of the grant was not the, not having a pool table. To use it for other activities. And if they have an office, an office hours, why are we doing their paperwork for them? That makes no sense to me.
Yeah. And also should note, I talked with Clay County Senior Services prior to the meeting and. They don't have any concerns of what we want to do with the building itself since it is the city's building. More or less Clay County Senior Services just manages to grant and that's us submitting their quarterly expenses to them. That way we, they can be reallocated for that in the previous, in the next year. So. What we want to do with the building is, is on, on you guys.
How many rentals do we turn away? Cause we don't have the time available. Like we have people that wanted before four o'clock to set up for a party and since we can't, we have to turn them away.
I wouldn't say that's too many. It's more on probably internal on staff side and we need to use the building for, for other things that we, we aren't able to get in there till.
Oh yeah, because you guys, Chief, you guys use it for training, right?
Yeah, there's been multiple times where we've had to ask permission to use the facility on a Tuesday or Thursday. Because it is scheduled for their time for chief to do any testing or, or training in there. And his team.
They're good.
Thank you, Matt. A couple of questions here. Do we, do we charge a cleanup fee for the rental?
Yeah. So there is a two hundred dollar deposit for each rental.
Okay. And on that deposit, do we clean the next day afterwards or who cleans?
So there is janitorial services that we do expense through the city that is, that is required for us in the lease. And that is every Monday, Wednesday and Friday in the evening. So they usually, it's the same team that cleans.
Okay. So like the mayor alluded, alluded to, or like you said, we'll go on the pancake breakfast after that. Do we have a cleaning service coming after that?
So the weekends, it would be on the renter to make it. To make the facility, when they're done to make it how they, you know, got it. Yeah.
Okay. And who, we walk through, I guess, and make sure and then detect their deposit or, or arrange. If we take their deposit, are we able to get a cleaning service to come in before the, the Monday?
We could, but most likely we do it in-house.
Okay. And the other thing is if we ask the, the seniors that use it, their opinion on this, I mean, if they might provide an opinion as far as. What they would do after two to use it. I mean, besides just, you know, hang out, you know, there might be some specific something there that. We don't know about. I'm not sure if we ran this by the people that actually use the facility.
Currently, we haven't got to there because we want to get basically board goals first and then kind of talk with them because obviously it comes from. The priority would come from here overall and then them secondary as well.
Okay, thank you.
On Tuesdays and Thursdays, do they have, they don't have any scheduled classes in, correct? If it's just office days?
It's just office days.
I'm for taking the Tuesdays and Thursdays away and making it training, using it for other purposes.
Yeah, they, they have.
If it's not taking anything away from them.
They've had, had like a few people come in and play pool, but that, that's probably about it.
So this is, we're just kind of looking for like some kind of the near term type of lease things. I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, if we. Remove Tuesday and Thursday, you know, is there any possibility that there could be some additional programming for seniors? And that would be a perfect time for them because, you know, it'd be early and, and things like that.
Yeah.
So that would be my concern.
I would think so. We could add more programming.
Okay. Cause I mean, I mean, yeah, and I also like having the additional programming for like teens, you know, maybe have allow for clubs, things, things like that. In the, in the late afternoons and I think that would be great to.
I think, I think basically our goal is to try to close that gap of the amounts that the city is. Operating that loss on that seventy-eight hundred is how can we fill that? You know, could we get more rentals in there? Could we add more, you know, fee-based programming? To help do that. But basically we need expanded hours and we're really limited to from, you know, four to, you know, nighttime.
And Matt, if I could jump in also, as the board will recall, as we talked through staffing needs and one of the things that will be included. In the budget that's provided to all is a recommendation of addition of Parks and Recreation Program Coordinator. In support of our, our Parks and Recreation Manager and that would be someone who would spend some time on coming up with additional programming. And could look at programming for this space. And I'm going to talk about some other stuff in my city administrator's report as well. We have some opportunities ahead of us with some additional space. So that'll be key.
No, Alderman Hartman, you had a long conversation today about. Things for kids to need to do in the community.
Absolutely, Mayor. Yeah, I had a constituent actually from Alderman Russell's area, but you know, we, we all want to treat our citizens and listen. As fairly as we elect as we can. So. Certainly concerned about the loss, but I, I echo the boards. We want to, we want to continue to offer those seniors. We, we don't want to displace them. We don't want to upset them. That is not the intent here, but I do see plenty of opportunity for us to open up to other, other community events and this. This conversation with this constituent was we need, we need things for our kids to do and places to go. I mean, it was a much deeper and wider conversation, but I think it's the opportunity to create revenue. Just to offset the cost. We're not here to make, make money, but certainly that loss of over seventy-three hundred dollars is concerning. But we have a wonderful opportunity to open it up to other events. I think of four H, I think of weekend events, I think of parties. There's, there's a wide variety of, of things we can offer. And if we advertise that, just like we do our courtyard and other, other places, I think there's opportunity.
Yeah. And like you said, I went, do want to be clear that we're no way, you know, going against the seniors while we're doing, we're just looking to. Basically use the space more effectively than it, than it is being used. So.
I know libraries also stop their free rentals for Girl Scouts and things like that. So they were all looking for places to go.
Yeah. And by doing some of the updates that we have allocated funds in twenty twenty-three with the painting and, and possibly rearranging some of the new equipment. It's just making that more appealing for rentals because right now it does, you know, look like a, an, an older building that was built in two, two thousand thirteen. So updating that will hopefully bring in more rentals and kind of spruce up the area.
In regards to personal, the personal items, is there? I really haven't been behind the closed doors in there. Is there room to? Put that stuff on carts or rolling cabinets that could be put away? And make it a little more sterile environment for rentals so that we don't have to worry about these personal items being damaged or anything like that.
Yeah, I think so. Some of the personal items that you would find in the pool room, like the decorations are probably the biggest part of it. Then out in the main area, there's a piano and then two bookshelves as well with a whole bunch of books and plants and things like that. So. I'm possibly just looking at, you know, what we can do with that area. You know, if that's just giving in the pool room or for that, for that storage for them and they can, you know, bring stuff out when they need it. Or if we want to use, utilize that space and do something different with that room.
Do they still have the copy mug rack too? That's real hard to move.
We did move that to a different area.
Because they're always worried about those getting broken too.
So. Do we get what you need for, on that? For short-term stuff.
What do you think? You get to negotiate this. So do you feel like you have the information to?
So we, are we good with linking from nine to four to nine to two and then eliminating the Tuesday and Thursday office hours? And then looking what we can move out of the main area for personal stuff and make it a little bit more. That stuff in that area.
Go around the board. Alderman Russell.
I'm good with it. I just, just a question. What you, you have on here that you have allocated funds to purchase paint and purchase equipment? What, what equipment?
Better banquet tables and like you said, rolling carts to move that stuff in and out a lot easier.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Yodell. I'm okay with it. I'd like to see the feedback from what comes back from the seniors. To find out if shortening their hours is going to. Mess things up too much or if it's. Fine by them to. To have, have that space available by two o'clock.
I'm good with it as well, as long as it doesn't take away any of their programming. If it's two o'clock, they're usually done, then so be it. I would like their feedback as well.
Chevalier.
Yeah, I'd really like the feedback, especially on removing Tuesday and Thursday. I'm, I'm still just, I'm just nervous, you know. I, I kind of feel like. You know, it's still the senior center, right? I mean, are we going to change the name to something else now? I mean, can we still call it a senior center if they're only there three days a week for a few hours? I mean. That's kind of what, that's, I feel like our primary goal should be seniors and I think.
Well, I think that's part of the longer term discussion is, is this, is that what we want that building to be? A community feel to it, senior focus or what, what is the direction of the board? And what I'm hearing here is we want a designated space for seniors that in the off times we're able to use for, for other purposes. And to maximize those purposes. Is that a good kind of summary of what I've heard so far around the table and ensure? And the reason we have not, as, as Matt indicated, we've not gone to the seniors to ask their kind of opinion on things yet because we will be negotiating the lease. So we want to kind of think through what the board's priorities are when we go to talk to them.
And if they're okay with, with Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I mean, that's fine with me too. But I mean, I'd, I'd rather maybe. You know, try to somehow keep every single day for them, give them an opportunity if we can get more programming from them as well. So. But everything else, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with.
Alderman Hartman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, echo the comments with stock to our seniors and just make sure that Tuesday, Thursday. I, I'm excited about offering, you know, I think of like a Smithville Senior Center and Community Center. Because I know community center can mean a lot of different things, but we do want to involve the community. We do want to open that up. And I think we can easily mirror our, 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 our charges that we've been discussing and talking about. That are published on, on the website to, to produce additional revenue and open the opportunity up for other groups.
Yeah, that, that brings up a good point of this was talked about in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as well, of starting with the senior center. And make it a more of a community building and see what we could do as programming and activities for, for all. And then that would lead to obviously something, you know, hopefully bigger in the future.
So do we currently still have limitations on kitchen use when, for the rentals?
No, they, they can use the kitchen as needed. So.
And you mentioned in your memo too, that there's some bills they're supposed to be paying that they're not. Are we going to, I mean, if we're going to keep it as a senior center, they should be held accountable to the lease terms, right? I mean, they haven't even paid the lease in seven years. So it is a dollar, but. It's principal. Alderman Atkins.
I agree so far. What we're looking at, if they're not using the facilities till two o'clock or after two o'clock, I like to see the youth in there. Instead of making them come to activity at six or seven.
What time's high school get out now? Middle school and high school? Three, two thirty? Yeah.
That, that sounds a win-win situation.
Sounds good. And then just as long term, this was something that was brought up by Clay County Senior Services. So. The contract runs until the beginning of August. Like I said, it's been recommended that we renew the contract in January rather than August. To better fit the timeline of renewal of grants and things like that. So is, would that be okay with?
I think that's fine. Just to align that to make it.
Yeah, we've done that with aligning stuff to the fiscal year too, but if they do a January budget, that's fine. Yeah, the August budget kind of, or the August timeline kind of messes with two budgets. Might as well get on their terms.
Thank you all.
Got everything you need?
Yep.
Do they want a PlayStation five too?
We'll get you.
Anybody else wants one? I've never played it. So I don't know. I stopped at PS three. You have any more cards? Thank you. Anybody else going once, going twice? Item number five. Ms. Mitchell. Then we'll do public comment, then we'll do board discussion.
Sounds good. So just a quick recap of what's happened previously as far as the sale of land in the, what we call the courtyard alleyway. Early twenty twenty-one, staff received and presented to the board a request for the proposed use of a strip of parkland. At one eleven North Bridge Street, directly south of Humphreys Bar and Grill. May fourth, twenty twenty-one, we had our first work session where the board directed staff to research different options on how we can handle. Moving forward with the use of that property. From there, the board then directed staff to move forward. With getting three separate options as far as research that was brought forward at September or on September twenty-one in a work session. And from that discussion, board directed staff to develop an RFP for the sale of that portion of land. That RFP was then posted. And with a deadline of. Um, with a deadline of January third of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and received one bid from Kansas City Properties and Investments, uh, in the amount of twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars. On February fifteenth, the, uh, proposal was brought forward as bill number twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-three dash twenty-two. Uh, it was placed on the board for approval on first reading, uh, and following public comment at that time, the bill failed, uh, one to four. Uh, since that meeting in February where the bill failed, um, Alderman Hartman has requested that this be placed on the agenda again for further consideration. Uh, to make sure that staff, um, moved forward. In the correct manner, making sure that the process that we do is fair and equitable, reach, we reached out to our city attorney to make sure that we're taking proper steps to move forward. Uh, and city attorney then directed us to, um, reissue the RFP if that is something that the board would want to move forward with. Uh, with that, uh, information, we came back to you all in a city administrator's report. Um, to see if you would like to reissue the RFP, and at that time, that is when the board then discussed, um, wanting to bring forth these options again, and that is where we are today. Um, so going through the options fairly quickly as they are stated in the memo, option one is to lease the property. Um, one of the biggest pros in this instance is that the city still maintains ownership and, uh, control of the piece of property. We would gain. Um, lease revenue from that as well. One of the cons is that because that land is parkland. Uh, the deck area, uh, would not be able to have alcohol on the premise. Um, because it is parkland, uh, the, um, owner of the business would have to get. A very long series of temporary, uh, liquor permits, and currently there's no way for, um, through the state to have a long-term temporary permit. For such as like a picnic license or a beverage license for alcohol. Option two is a sale of the property. Um, at that time, one of the pros is that, um, the. Issue of alcohol no longer there, the property would then no longer be public property. Uh, the con would then be the city would be relinquishing, um, the ownership and therefore the control of the property as well. Looking forward. In the future, uh, and then option three, um, as always is a do nothing option. Uh, staff is willing to discuss other alternatives with the business, um, in question, uh, if they would like to move forward with it. Um, and then as far as pros, there's always, uh, parking, the parking spots that are there, those would not be impacted. Um, and then cons, if the property owner decides not to go with the alternatives, that outdoor space would not be available to. Um, the public to use. Um, also in your pocket is public correspondence that we've received, um, with this as the subject line in favor of and opposed to. Um, and then from there, staff seeks direction from the board regarding next steps on these three options, and I do understand we have a list, a long list of. Public comment as well.
Not nearly as long as some. Um, one other meeting I think that wasn't mentioned in here is the Sidgo, the Parks Board as well.
Yes, yep, um, it does mention, so the Park and Recreation Committee as well as the Main Street Group, uh, did have discussions regarding this piece of land.
Thank you. And currently the property owns a portion of that land off the building as well, right?
I believe it's two or three feet off of the building.
Be some small tables out there. All right, public comment, do we have any, I know we had a couple of people request the Zoom, do you want to do those first, Linda, or do we need to do the ones in the room first? Or John, what is this? What did the statue go for? Okay, so I'll, I'll go with the, in the room first, since Alicia's at the, the top and she starts with a. You're up. I know you love public speaking, so. State your name for the record and your address, and you have three minutes. I'm not starting.
My name's Alicia Neff, and I live at seven zero eight Quincy Boulevard in Smithville. I am, uh, in favor of the lease or sale, um, of the property. Um, I think that, um, the owners of Humphreys as well as the building owner have really, um. Really done a great job with the downtown renovations. Shane has put millions of his own money into things. Um, a lot of those buildings that he has renovated were pretty neglected by the previous owners. Um, I think that the owners of Humphreys, Dave and Tiffany, have come out to help with almost every single event that we have done downtown. They've been really proactive. Anytime someone needs even the smallest thing, they're right there. I mean, everybody downtown works really well together, and I think they've just kind of. Jumped right in, um, even only being here for a year, a year and a half. Uh, they've done a great job of that. My one question as far as if there is a sale would be if there's any sort of, um. Like a stipulation or something in like a sales contract that says. If it's sold and then something changes, you know, in ten or fifteen years or whatever, the building sells and. The new person doesn't want it, can there be anything there limiting whether or not they just leave the patio area to deteriorate? So, but I have received a lot of, uh, good feedback from people who come into my store, um, just emails from friends and things saying that. The first thing they do when they take their kids out to eat is look for an outdoor space to eat. Um, you got a crying kid or, uh, a grumpy teenager, it's always nicer. And being in a lake town, I think it's really nice to have an outdoor space. If you've been out on the lake all day, you don't want to go sit inside if you're sopping wet and sunburned. You want to. Sit on the patio where you're not quite as judged for looking the way you might, not that I speak from experience, so that's all.
Thank you. Jen? If you, if you want, I mean. Name, address, and yeah, let me hear what you said. Okay, you're good.
Uh, Jennifer Blakey, uh, eight Sherry Court here in Smithville. Uh, I want to speak in favor of the lease or sale of the downtown property and the development of the courtyard park area. Um, I do have business directly next door to Humphreys, um, and I am fully in favor of this development, as is my business partner. Uh, Dave and Tiffany have supported this community since they opened their doors. They support, um, a lot of, I mean, in addition to helping out with all the things that go on downtown. Um, personally, I know they've fed our baseball team for every out of town trip they have. I know they've done that with many. Teams and organizations and, um, donated a lot of food and a lot of time, uh, around town. Uh, in addition to that, uh, Shane, uh, is also my landlord, and I believe he has been a wonderful property owner. He's continued to invest his money into restoring. Uh, the different buildings, uh, he's invested in downtown, uh, together, every property that they have touched. They, um, have done needed and alluring updates to and, uh, made them a lot more appealing and functional. Uh, Dave and Tiffany have drawn business downtown and given new life to their current space. Uh, personally, I believe that as our, as our community continues to grow and develop, we will need to continue to adapt and find ways to support. The existing businesses that we have, uh, so that we make sure to keep as much spending as we can locally. Uh, Dave and Tiffany have always been gracious business neighbors to us and, um. Sharing a wall with a bar is maybe not for everybody, but I can say, um, I have no doubt that they will be able to operate the outdoor space successfully. Without disrupting any, uh, current or future use of the courtyard area.
Thank you. Joel? No cane this time. I saw you were working on a deck all day, so.
Yes.
You're good.
Head fund. Joel Schrader, seventeen oh two Northeast, one hundred ninety-seventh court. Uh, I'd like to point out that the, uh, for the letters that, uh, supported the sale, the lease of Courtyard Park that were included in the packet. Come from people that are no lo, are no longer residents of Smithville or never have been. Nine of the letters of, uh, or messages included being a lake town, many people like to come and eat after being on a boat, trails or fishing all day. And feel comfortable eating outside. If I've been outside all day long, all I want to do is cool off, so that doesn't really make a sense to me. One of the persons actually wrote that this would be great, uh, would create a fun and safe environment for our teenagers to spend time with friends. During school functions and after school. Where they serve alcohol, really? I asked many questions in my emails to our, to my, our, our alderman. But I feel should have been answered regarding the sale of the strip of Courtyard Park. Only one of them has actually responded to any of the things I asked. No one in Smithville has been able to forecast accurately any additional revenue, the land, or the sale of the land would generate for the city according to the minutes of the alderman. The best choice for improving foot traffic in downtown Smithville is to provide a venue like Courtyard Park that is friendly to vendors. We should market to groups that use the park for their activities, not just one business. Reaching out to more groups that would use the park would increase foot traffic to downtown Smithville. Art in the park, music, dance, new shows, children's activities and festivals. They would bring new people to the town and increase awareness of what we have to offer.
David Cox?
Thank you for the opportunity to address here. My name is David Cox. I own Humphreys Bar and Grill at one 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 North Bridge Street, right here in Smithville. First of all, I'd like to say that my wife and I absolutely love the community. We love everything about it. That's, that's the main reason that we, we relocated one of our restaurants to this community. Smithville's growing, and I don't think anybody can deny that, okay? And, and it doesn't have anything to do with what I'm doing or anybody else. It, it's growing, and that's one of the reasons we, we decided to come here. With growth comes need, okay? Outside dining is something that I do believe that Smithville is lacking. We, we, we plan on, uh, continuing to. Support this community, uh, donate to this community and, and do everything we can to be part of this community. In fact. We're looking within the year to relocate from where we're at now, which is about seven minutes south to Smithville to be a part of the community. We own Humphreys, we own the, uh, cornwell that we're hoping to open within the, the thirty days. And if plans go as planned, we're hoping to open a third business in the city limits with, by, by spring of next year. Some of the concerns that, that they're, that, that we're kind of getting is the parking. You're losing six spaces is all you're losing, right? And majority of the time, our employees are the ones that are parking in those six spaces. We're open from eleven o'clock until midnight. So they're the ones that really are going to be put out as far as that goes. Safety is another factor. There were two children hit by cars since we've been there. Luckily, neither one of them were serious, and they were just clipped. One was a car backing up and hit a child, and then another was the car coming through the alleyway and, and clipping a child. So, so safety, I think the, the need, I think the community is, is asking for this need. I think the community, for the most part, is wanting an outside. Dining area in the downtown area of Smithville. So. I hope that this can be put back on the, on the agenda. I hope that it, it, it goes through and, uh. And we can move forward with the sale of the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane, are you there? You're unmuted if you are.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
All right, my name is Shane Crease. My address is one three five three zero Mount Olivet Road, Smithville, Missouri. And I own the property at one eleven North Bridge Street where Humphreys is located, and so. You know, a few things to, to kind of go off of what, what's already been mentioned is. I really think there is a much needed service for this outdoor dining. Um, I think ultimately, if, if the previous RFP. The area in question is a total of one thousand six hundred and eighty square feet, so as a percentage of the park as a whole, it's rather small. We are not asking to take the whole park. We, we are looking at a small area that could provide a much needed service. With the outdoor dining, and I think it was mentioned earlier, is actually my property line is three feet off the building, so it is in a portion of that alley. Right now, that alley is kind of, um. Not the best maintained. It generates no revenue for the city, uh, with the sale of it. There would be obviously the revenue from the sale. There would be the added revenue from the new improved structure, so there would be a property tax base and, um. Per preliminary numbers that we've talked about, there's probably about, and it, it would probably generate approximately five hundred thousand dollars worth of additional sales tax revenue. So there are a lot of added benefits there. I think one thing, you know, that the park itself, I think it's already booked for majority of the weekends, so. You know, bringing a bunch of new people and things in there, I mean, that's great, but if it's already booked, that's kind of difficult to do. And I, I think the other thing, just to make sure it's clear, is it just affects the west portion of that alley, not the east portion. So like. David had mentioned, those parking spaces, you know, are primarily used by his employees or customers, and they would have the. Most impact from eliminating those. So I think that's pretty much all the points I wanted to make.
Thank you. Any other cards, Linda? Okay. Before I open up to the board, um. One of the comments I've seen a few times is put it on the ballot. Twenty eighteen, we did put this on the ballot. We renovated our downtown. We passed a bond and a sales tax to do so, so this falls in line with that. That ballot is you built multiple patios for multiple businesses that are leased from the city on an annual basis. Uh, they do serve alcohol as well, as most of our events do as well, so kids being around alcohol is, uh, you know, to responsible adults. They have a liquor license. Additional programming, uh, Matt, we have thirty-three downtown events booked this year, I think, somewhere around there. Uh, we could probably cram a few more in there, but adding art in the park, which we already do four times, uh, this month alone, right? Uh, those things cost money and revenue is needed for those because our parks is funded by a half cent sales tax. And that's, uh. That money just doesn't fall out of the tree in the park, so I'll open up to the rest of the board for discussion. Who wants to go first? Alderman Hartman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I did recognize, and I do recognize all of the constituents, I, uh, that are in the packet. The for and against, and, uh, since we're in a work session, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, because one of the biggest questions for those who are against is how can. An alderman bring up, uh, an item, uh, that's been defeated? And, uh, it was asked of our legal counsel, and the, the answer is we can as elected officials, as many times as we'd like to bring up an item that's been defeated. Uh, I, I, I would certainly be. Open to discussions more about that, but, um, it, I just felt like, um, I wanted to bring that up, so. Another question, and then I'll dive into why, um, I'm for this. Um, I was attending city business in Jeff City on the evening of the vote. I was attending them in Missouri Municipal League as a representative. As an alderman, and so that's why I was not present. There were several questions of why I wasn't here. Um, and so I just want to make sure that that's, uh, open, uh, to everybody to understand. The three reasons I support is number one is economic development. Economic development is, is, is very important for our city. It's key. To revenue for our city. Most everyone recognizes constituents and my fellow board members that. Uh, we, we, we gain revenue really by two major ways. Number one is property taxes, right? And oftentimes those property taxes, um, uh, from commercial and or. Uh, your residential is about five percent to the city of the total hundred percent you pay on average. Um, so it's a small portion, but of the, uh, potential sale, um, we would, we would, um. Gain some property taxes from a structure that would be there because there'd be an assessed value assigned to that. And so that's, that's a reason. The other is sales tax, and I believe Shane alluded to that. Um, question may be asked is how can a small portion add sales tax? But sales tax is a lifeblood of our, of our, um, our city, our operating budget. I've, uh, served on the finance committee, um, uh, and was appointed, uh, again this year by our mayor. Is, is absolutely the lifeblood, and, and really. Um, I, I think when we have developers, regardless of who they are, and I think another question was brought up or, or asked of that. Any of us as, uh, city, uh, aldermen have any ties to this? Absolutely not. I, 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 uh. Uh, talk with Shane, just like I talk with any other developer in real estate business. I have no, um, economic or personal interest in that. Um, it's, uh, it's pro-development. I'm, I'm for development, I'm for advancement of our, our community. And I think that David and, and his crew has done a great job. Every time that my wife and I have gone to that restaurant, no matter what evening it is, there's a wait. There's a wait, and one that, that's, uh, obviously. There's a wait. And one that, that's obviously, you know, in our, our current environment with jobs, but the other part is they do a phenomenal job. There's never been a bad meal. His staff is very professional. His staff will always try hard. If it's a new person, they'll, they'll tell us they're new person. And you know what? All of us give grace to those folks who are in, in the restaurant business that are new. And we, we value what David and his crew does and also value not just Shane. And then finally, we, we have future opportunity to sell city land. And I believe that if we say no to one and yes to another, we're establishing a very poor precedence for our, our city and the board. So thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak on that.
Thank you. Alderman Chevler is next, can I saw?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not so sure about saying press it on sale of land because you know, I, I think it just depends on where the, the land is, right? Where, where it makes sense to sell. But yeah, I'm, I'm still, I would still like to see a lease be developed and look into that option. One thing I will say is, you know, us talking today, I mean, we're not approving anything. All, all we're doing is, is asking to put out another RFP to look at what potentially can be out there. And, and you know, the assumption is Shane, you know, David are going to put in a bid, but I mean, there's, there's other bids that people, other people can put in bids too. And if there's something else that they think that they can provide that would look good, I mean, we would want to look at that as well. And as far as the lease, you know, I get the cons was about the alcohol. I mean, surely we can figure something out to, you know, if we can allow it in other places, surely we can figure out a way to allow alcohol in that section of park. Yep. So that, that, that's one thing. And then finally, the parking, I mean, with, you know, that's all, that keeps getting brought up, but you know, like spin mentioned, you know, most of the people that are parking there are going to Humphries. And you know, the other times that, you know, people would want to use that space, they can't because the event has already blocked that, that off anyways. So I mean, I, I don't understand, you know, where, where the, you know, people are, are just going to have to party somewhere else when they come to these events. That's the way they do it now. So there's no going to be any difference. So, and, and if we are going to, you know, just with the safety issues, you know, I've seen multiple businesses park cars there overnight in the alleyway and things like that that are down there, which you know, is probably not, not a good use of that land as well. So I mean, I, I would even want to even look at parking completely in those alleys and figure out maybe not, not allowing it to begin with. Especially with, you know, with, with their space so close because it's actually three feet. It's like, right, three feet extra. So that already, there's already not enough space to really have a good parking there any, to begin with. So we, they'll have to go into his property in order to do it. So.
I know many cars have clipped the building, backing out, just watching. So I don't know how many there are, but you've got cameras, you've probably figured it out for us. Alderman Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. And to go back to John Chevler's comment, yeah, I've seen that especially on, when there's events there, people drop off in park now. It's beneficial to them. But as far as parking and backing up, I, I don't know how many times like the mayor says it's been clipped. I'd imagine that's quite a bit, but when, when I look at this and going through this issue, I went and looked at the Vision and Strategic Action Plan that was developed in 2019 and looked at, at the pros and cons of this as as described and projected in that plan. One of the things, a couple of things that are mentioned in that was the Mayberry Gone piece, which talks about the community and protects small town feel and focuses on retaining more traditional values. What I've seen in this last year, maybe two years is not traditional value, at least in the downtown, if you want to say for children and families that that, that thirty-two-year-old and under target group was, was supposed to hit in 2019. I think that the, uh, the retention of the small town feel and the sense of community and like Alderman Hartman mentioned, mentioned a few minutes ago, a place for kids to go and things to do. I think that that's important that we really should focus on at least that chunk, that small chunk of land there for things to do with the family, right? I think that's important and I really do. And I know that when, when we, when I start, we started to go through the, the pros and cons and also the letters from the community, the people that I've talked to from, at least from, from the ward that I'm in, I, I didn't, I couldn't find anybody that was for this. The letters are for it. I had one letter that was sent to me that was for it from someone who's outside of my ward. I had multiple people to send. I've sent them to, to Cynthia and to, to submit to you guys and also a couple more that I've gotten that I would, yesterday that I did not submit to her, but one was for it, one was against it. That's the one, those four that I got. There, there's also a, the piece that we talked about earlier, it was mentioned, um, right now that, that property is for Lake Fest, the Cruz Festivale, Farmer's Market's a big one there, Homecoming, Fifth, Fifth Quarter, but also a community in action that meets there. And that, that group is anti-drug and anti-alcohol. I think we're sending the wrong message to that group by doing this and, and I know mean, by no means against alcohol. So I don't want anybody to get that, but I am for community and for families. So I want everybody to get that. But there's a, there was a letter of support template that was sent around and multiple people filled that out and sent it into, we have that in here. It's a template that was used and you see on the template, it's continually saying on there about going to the lake, right? And coming back after a long day boating. That's great. And we love the people in the town, but where do they park the boat? Because it's not here in downtown. I think we need to address parking if we're really going to mention parking as an issue. We need to address the parking in this town first. But with going forward with the letters that were sent, all of them that were sent to me that forwarded, I have no commitment or ties to anyone here that sent letters. All the layers that were sent to the other layers for have ties to members on this board or not in this town. So with that being said, I don't, in good conscience, I cannot vote for this, this sale of property at all. I am opposed to it, but I do have an alternative that may be work. Okay. And if you look at the front of Humphries, I propose the idea of moving the sidewalk, the curb up to cover the two or three parking spaces in front of Humphries. That would allow for tables to be out there for outdoor dining and also I think resolve the issues that we have at hand here. Now, it might not be as much space as the, the owner would like, but I think that it would allow for some seating similar to what they have in front of shops. And that might be an alternative that we can take and all be satisfied with. And Mr. Cox and his family, I think they've done a great job with Humphries and I appreciate what they've done for the community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, you're at all?
To kind of piggyback off what, what he said, I am, I am not for this. I'm not for selling parkland in, in general. And, and with saying what, what he said, what Alderman Hartman said, I don't think it sets a precedence. If we don't sell parkland, but we sell other properties that have different roles in the, in the community, we have to look at those separately. One of my big things about this is it, it's parkland. We use it. Everybody uses it that comes down, even if it's not a street closure, street or a fair of some sort. They use it to load and unload. The bands use it to unload and unload. They want to be able to pull through, especially if there's trailers or anything like that. Once we sell something like that, we can't get it back. A lease option, yeah, that's plausible, but I, it, it looks like it's going to be too much work. If, if it's plausible to do it. I would say, no, we don't need to sell it. At least I wouldn't want to put somebody through that burden of trying to work all the way around that for potentially years to try to get the proper licensing to do it. As for the emails that I received, tons of emails, a lot of them showed up on the, the packet. I wasn't a big fan of the template that went around. I got them all within a couple of days of each other and a lot of them were not Smithville residents. They said this, the exact same thing. And I agree, I've been out on the boat for too long and the last place I want to be is outside. I want to be inside cooling off. So some of that stuff in the, these template emails didn't make sense to me. So I would to not get stand on a soapbox for the next five minutes, I would say, no, we should not be selling parkland.
Alderman Atkins, Alderman Kowalski, you have a chime in?
Go ahead. I went ahead and took advantage of the internet, Facebook with a couple of our HOAs in Ward Three. We only have two. And we did have a good turnout as far as people responding to the questions and primarily they were all positive. I did have the same usual emails from everybody else that we all understand already. I myself like the idea of, of, of continuing our vision and strategic plans that we've already been voted on by the people. They spoke out already as we, we known that to make it a private oasis downtown or a, a functional community oasis. And I think this could benefit. However, I'm not necessarily fond of selling the land. I mean, if there is a lease agreement that we could work out, I know it's going to be complicated possibly, or maybe even like Alderman Russell suggested, turn it into a, a dining area. How can we have both worlds?
Alderman Kowalski.
Where to begin? I'm going to piggyback off of Dan Hartman as far as the revenue, property tax. I completely agree. I think it is a smart business decision. I would still like to see the leasing options to not lose the land. I did receive the same link, the same emails as everybody else. I did have feedback, verbal feedback. People in my ward would like to see outdoor seating. First, because of COVID, they're still feel more comfortable eating outside. I prefer to eat outside. Just, it's not as loud. I always get cold when I eat inside. So that's my two cents on that. I do see about when you, when I've been out in the sun all day, I still want to sit outside because I get cold easy. If I'm sunburnt, I don't want to be staying in air conditioning. So you have people that have those feelings. I also feel that even if we don't do anything, I think that alleyway should be blocked off from vehicles because of the safety issues. I've had employees in my monastery school walking at the time it was, what was it before Humphries?
Kennedy's.
Kennedy's. She was walking by the brick building as close as she could and she almost got hit by a car who was backing out. So I've always mentioned, I would rather tables, more benches. I've always said that anyways. So rather we move forward with that, with nothing. I want to see that. As far as alcohol, yes, I am on CIA and I had someone, you know, come, come at me about being on CIA. We are a prevention group to help youth with drinking and drugs. Seeing people consume alcohol in the outdoor setting is no different than them seeing them in the indoor setting, eating dinner, lunch, whatever. We are not about no alcohol, period. I just want to put that out there. So I don't think the alcohol should even be put into this conversation because people are allowed to consume alcohol at the events, at other outdoor areas in our community and in our downtown area. So I think that's kind of a, a done excuse as well or argument. Fifth quarter, it is four to potentially five Fridays a year. Again, I think that is great. If anything, I think it's more an inconvenience for people dining outside because their kids are going to be loud. It's going to be hard to have a conversation. Those people, if I saw fifth quarter going on, I'm going to select to sit inside. I'm not going to sit outside. So I think again, that's another argument that is not a good argument. What else? I think there's still plenty of room to load and unload on the other side of the alleyway. So I think that's still kind of a not a good argument. I'm trying to think what else. I think it's pretty much that, but I still think I support this, our strategic plan that we are following in our vision for our downtown area. And I still think we need to move forward with leasing or selling it.
Yeah. And I'll echo your comments on CIA since I've served there for four years and my wife and I are the ones who put together the fifth quarter event because we've had them in our hometowns. The Mayberry Gone scenario, you might want to reread that strategic plan that was voted down. We were working on the modern community oasis, not Mayberry Gone. As it goes to a fifth quarter, one of the, that was one of the first concerns we did go to Mr. Cox about and say, and he said during any events, if we want to use that space for staging or monitoring chaperones, whatever, it's ours to use. It's not going to be a situation we have to worry about. So, I mean, he's worked with us on every other event. He's closed the garage door during movie night. If it's the bands playing or there's music. I don't see him changing his mind on those things. So anyway, any other comments? Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I forgot one important part in our Parks Master Plan. We are moving forward to creating what I believe is a wonderful amphitheater in the Heritage Park area. I think that's an opportunity that's going to be even better for acoustics, better for gathering. There is going to be parking. It's going to be more of an intimate setting. Not that the events that we hold downtown are not, but I, I think that I would encourage my fellow board members and constituents to look at that. I had a conversation with a constituent this weekend who reached out to me and we talked about that. And I think that amphitheater is going to be a wonderful opportunity to not necessarily pull attention or, or, or people away from downtown. It's going to be an extension of downtown, right? It's really not that much further from the courtyard.
Well, to that point too, as all of you know, I like to study history and I've gone back and read the Parks Board Minutes and up until the nineties, Heritage Park was the park because it was Legion Park. That's where the Legion was located. That's where the bands played. That's where the events were. The courtyard was a used car lot. Correct? Ms. Coulter and Bar Blam who are in the back row who've been here for, yes. So we've held downtown events there and that was the area for entertainment prior to the condemnation of a used car lot that was not taken care of by the previous owner. Don Hanks is not here tonight, but he gave me a good history lesson on that entire situation. And rest in peace, Mr. Kindred. That was, I know you were angry about that for a long time. So that was not a park for very long and the moving events into heritage as we grow makes sense. That's where we used to have them. You can't fit a carnival in our downtown. We've tried. If we could find a carnival, we'd try to get it down here. I'd love to see one, but heritage is a bigger park and the Legacy Fund Board and the Parks Board is fundraising for a bigger stage so we can have bigger events. Cause I think last time I checked, Festivale was at about seven, eight thousand people anticipated based on the Diamond Rio webpage. It's going to be tight. Any other comments? So I hear lease, lease, sell, lease, sell, lease, sell. No, no. So four, two, is that my count correctly? Anybody want to correct me on that?
Say that one more time.
So we've got four that are in favor of lease or sale and we got two that are not.
Well, I'm in favor of a lease.
Yep. So you're in favor of a lease. Hartman's in favor of lease or sale. Marv, lease or sale, and Tino's. So majority is put the RFP out as it was because it was for lease or sale, right? For sale. So do we want to, so we've got three for sales or if we have four leases? Marv, where you at? Please, Hartman?
Mayor, I'd still like to look at the sale, but I am open to a lease.
Okay. Chevler, you are clear where you're at?
I prefer a sell, but would be fine.
Okay. If we could rewrite it for lease, go for it. Is that the direction you need? John, I know you have some, probably have some work to do on entertainment district type of work or however we make this work.
I have a question real quick. Is there going to be any thought about the alternative that I proposed as far as moving the curb out and allowing that space for seating like they have at shops and eliminate this whole issue?
Well, I think we've heard quite a few people say they don't want to give up more parking on the street, but
Right, but you're giving up two or three instead of six.
Yeah, I don't think anybody else on the board is, or jumped on that idea. So, no? All right. Alderman Hartman, Atkins, Chevler?
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Awesome. Moving on. Play compensation plan. I'm guessing this is Ms. Mitchell as well. Thank you.
All right. Last item for the work session, discussion of employee compensation plan. This is the last portion of the classification and compensation study completed by McGrath Consulting. So this portion of that study is a complete redo of all of the job descriptions for all the employees within the city of Smithville and a and a an update of the pay grade scale. Bit of a Scrivener's error in the report. It says the plan was last revised in 2000. The plan was last revised in 2020, missing a two in there just for you all. So based on discussions with the consultant, looking through the job descriptions, we mainly went through to make sure that each job description was placed correctly within the pay grade scale that was then provided. All of these things are then based on market data of similar communities in this area, making sure that we're competitive. But on the external side, but on the internal side, we're fair and equitable between departments as well. The main changes that are in here is one, the change of the management analyst in the Public Works Department. When we initially started this study, that position had just started, and we were unable to really go through that position with all of the different items that that position would be completing. So that position has been re-titled to the Assistant to the Public Works Director and then as well reclassified in the pay grade. Also, as a result of the board discussion at the retreat, two new positions have been created in the compensation plan. A water treatment plant shift supervisor that is mainly for the evening shift. Someone who is in charge when the plant manager is not there. Also, it's a safety issue as well for to make sure that there are at least two employees there if something's happening. For safety reasons, we have that covered. And the second is a recreation coordinator. We currently have the position at a part-time, but this would then increase that to a full-time position, mainly working with sports and different programs provided by the Parks Department. So staff is looking for any direction on any change that you'd like to see in the job descriptions as well as the pay grade schedule. And I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Any questions? I think this one's very straightforward. Nothing's easy for you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So prior to adjourning, and you're welcome to sit down. And I, because Matt's here, and I don't know how much, if he's got anything on the next agenda. And there's a couple of the Main Street groups here and some folks from the Farmer's Market. I will remind you, our parks are smoke-free. That means don't smoke in them. Thank you. Now entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Mayor, a second.
Call in favor of adjourning, say aye. Call those, say no. We'll be back in thirty minutes.